Okay, our first item on the business is consideration of the minutes which we were all sent out. Any comments, suggestions, corrections in the minutes? My only comment is thank you again, Sonya. They're very nicely done.
Did I really appreciate the minutes?
Any other comments? Can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
What? Never mind.
Yeah, if the minister accurate, we'd need someone else to make the motion.
I'll make a motion. I was here. I wasn't here.
I'll second.
Senator, voice vote or a roll call?
Voice vote. Voice vote is fine. Abstentions will be noted by Sonya.
Okay. All in favor? Any names?
Any abstentions? I'll abstain.
Okay, we have a few, you know, little changes in the agenda. There are a couple of things that come up and things we'd like to resolve. So Steve, you want to, if you want, or you want to give us a heads up there on certain stuff?
Happy to do so, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. First of all, we have an application that was going to be heard this evening. PB 12 dash 22, JCPNL. JCPNL, yes, I got it right. First Energy Corp., Block 8601, Lot 4, 300 Madison Avenue. Proposing installation of an emergency generator. I believe, well, I know that we have certified mail. The personal mail was done fine. All the green slips were returned. The notice was, the content was sufficient. It was timely served by personal service, i.e. certified mail. However, as we've found out, is becoming somewhat all too common an occurrence. The newspaper was supposed to publish it in our local paper for the applicant and published it in the Asbury Park Press. That's two for two, as we'll hear more about later when we have another application that's here this month or this meeting as opposed to the last meeting because of the very same thing happening. So the, it is my understanding that I've been requested and I would recommend to the board that we announce that the matter is being carried. Again, the notice was sufficient. From a content standpoint, the matter is being carried without further personal slash certified mail notice, but with further publication notice to April 3rd, correct, Sonya?
Yes.
At 7:00 PM at the same location, our township municipal building. So if there's anyone here for that matter, aside from the fact that you can stay for everything anyway, but that matter will not be heard this evening. That should suffice as the announcement, Mr. Chairman, for that one.
I apologize to any members of the public for who have, who may have come to see that application. I hope not, but you know, it's unfortunate that this happened again, so. Move forward. So, okay. Um, I think next we wanted to do the. Yes, 284, right.
Chairman, I could tee that up as well if you'd like.
Please do.
The, it's PBO 5 dash 22, 284 Mendham LLC, Block 4501, Lot 4, RA 130 Zone. Applicant requested an extension to record the minor subdivision deed, which as we know is a 190 day timeframe. And as I understand it, the applicant would be very close. So the prudent action, I think, was to request the extension. If I'm not mistaken, there may be a representative of the applicant for 284 here this evening. If you'd like to enter his appearance, then I think we can address this relatively quickly.
Thanks.
And as the board knows, as he's making his way up, as the board knows, in anticipation, we provided a resolution. If the board does grant the very brief extension request, all we need to do is vote on both the decision and the resolution in one fell swoop, as we say, and just adopt the resolution. But here he is for his appearance.
Good evening all. Matthew Passav, Sales, Commiss and Gross, and represent the applicant 284 Mendham LLC. The reason for the extension is, as Mr. Warner recited, it's essentially we are right at the cusp of the deadline. We have submitted the deed itself review and also the plans for review and signature, which has been reviewed by your professionals and they have both consented. It's both the deed and the plot itself, but in an abundance of caution, we want to make sure that we record it. And if in the event it passes the deadline, we have that extension itself. But it's our position we'll be submitting it tomorrow.
And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Passada couldn't confirm, I think the deadline is either tomorrow or the day after, correct?
Yes, sir. The day after. March 21st.
March 21st, okay. So I think it's a 30 day extension request. I'm sorry?
It's tomorrow.
Tomorrow's the 21st.
Tomorrow, right. Tomorrow, right. And I do know that, my apologies, the chairman's name was misspelled. It may have been a carry forward, carry forward from an inadvertent error, no doubt, in council's letter. But it's misspelled a couple of places and that will be cleaned up in the resolution. But as the board knows, 190 day deadline, March 21, tomorrow. To record the minor subdivision deed, it appears as if it's going to be done, if not tomorrow, within a day or two thereafter. It's a 30 day request. I don't mean to make the argument on behalf of applicants, council. I think it's a reasonable argument to make and certainly the board will decide whether it is or it isn't. But if you do wish to grant the applicant the 30 day extension, we do have the resolution and without the spelling errors, I think it covers everything, including, gives until April 19th to record the subdivision deed. And the approval for that extension would be subject to all the same conditions as are set forth in the original resolution of approval, which was dated back in, I believe, August, actually September of 2022.
I would just note that one of the provisions in here is that the subdivision deed and resolution compliance plan are endorsed by myself. I have done that, so we, so, and I, you know, urge that we go ahead and vote and approve this extension.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the extension as requested.
And that would also adopt the resolution as well.
Further amend my motion that we also adopt the resolution as council has clearly told me. I forgot to.
I apologize, but thank you.
I'll second that.
Can you call the rolls, Sonya?
Mr. Alessio.
Yes.
Is there an order?
Yes.
Mr. Nun?
Yes.
Mr. Rabbit?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Quillen?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Bine?
Yes. Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to our first application for the evening. No, we have another resolution, right? Yes, I'm sorry. I've turned to, so we have another resolution to deal with, yes.
Yes, and with your permission, Mr. Chairman, that's March County Golf Club, the amended preliminary and final site plan approval that was granted just a few short weeks ago. And hopefully the resolution is an accurate memorialization of the decision of the board and the reasons therefore and the conditions. It did go through the process of our board professionals and the applicant's professionals reviewing and providing input into same. This is for 36 Punch Bowl Road, the golf course, the proposed improvements to the facility maintenance operations located near the center of the 146 acre property in the OSGU zone. It was a unanimous nine zero approval, many conditions, one of which I would ask the board's indulgence in making a last 11th hour modification at the request of the council, excuse me, of applicants' council. And, and our board professionals, our engineer, and I believe our fire official as well have approved this. This is condition number six on page 13. It reads, "The applicant shall provide a fire department connection leading to the halfway house." Then it has other language, and then it says, "Subject to review and approval of the township fire official." Apparently I was a little too over excited in providing additional support for what might be needed, when in fact, all that apparently is needed is the fire department connection leading to the halfway house. And I believe it resulted in the applicant having an additional obligation that they couldn't meet, and more importantly, I guess, was not necessary. So the request was to delete the portion of condition six from the word "and" to the word "area", and then it would just be the connection leading to the halfway house, subject to the review and approval of the township fire official. So if the board is okay with that amendment, if there's no others, that would be the motion to adopt the resolution as amended. And hope, if I was incorrect in anything, please let me know if I was wrong.
I mean, I would, I'll make the motion based off of the changes in the recommendations and discussions to make that correction. So it's, everything that is stated is factual and there is no issue.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, about whether the resolution needs to contain some language. Sorry, I have a question about whether the resolution needs to contain language about the ability of the applicant to file permits earlier than otherwise would be permitted. Something that was discussed, and I have to confess, I was a little confused by that topic two weeks ago, and I'm still a little confused.
Did we not include that? It, it's not required that be, it be included. Candidly, sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't. The, if we didn't include it though, again, it's not required. My apologies for forgetting if we did or didn't in this one. I don't remember seeing that.
It was a separate vote, maybe.
What's that?
It was a separate vote. So maybe it wasn't included.
Yeah, I mean, basically, the way that generally works is, is the risk is for the applicant to proceed earlier if they wish to do so.
It's in number four.
And, ah, thank you.
Which says, "Begin site preparation work as set deemed reasonable."
Yes, thank you. "The applicant may at its discretion file for all permits required to complete the improvements as set forth in the approval and begin site preparation work prior to the adoption of the resolution in the lapse of the 45 days. However, applicant accepts all responsibility for same and proceeds at its own risks in doing so. If there was ever a doubt that it was written by an attorney, that should remove all doubt."
Permit square filed last week.
There we go.
I still don't see it. It's on.
It's condition number four. We actually did put it as a condition.
Page 13, condition four.
Probably because it was so long and my apologies for writing it so detailed. Okay, thank you. I'll second the motion.
Sonya?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Nun?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alessio?
Yes.
Is there an order?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. Bine?
Yes.
Okay. Now, moving on to the first public hearing. We have the Order of St. Benedict of New Jersey, St. Mary's Abbey. Can you introduce it for us, Sonya? Oh, I'm sorry. That was, I'm turning my page too fast. Yes, I'm sorry. We have the courtesy review of, from the Township of Morris.
Thank you. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I'm hogging the mic again tonight. But the, to tee it up, the, this is a township application. As the board knows, the township is exempt from zoning, but two things. One, with capital projects, we do a courtesy review. And two, notwithstanding the fact that the township is exempt from zoning and does not have to provide notice for applications, our township does appear and present site plan applications. And our township does provide notice, even though it's not required. And at least in my opinion, I apologize for sharing my opinion. I think that's a good thing. So the, so we do have representatives of the township here. I did have an opportunity to review the notice. And despite the fact that notice is not required, it was perfect. The content was sufficient. It was timely served. The certified mail was done February 22nd. The publication was done February 24th in the local paper, No Asbury Park Press or otherwise. And both of those dates are at least 10 days prior to this evening's hearing. In fact, 24 days, if I counted correctly, in advance of this evening. So it was very well done, in my opinion. And I'll swear in the representatives from the township when they're ready to proceed. As well as our board professionals. So if, you'll all raise your right hand, Nicole and Dave. Do all four of you swear together affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you all. And you could just introduce yourselves and we can proceed.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to come in with a project.
Hold the microphone a little closer. I'm sorry.
Thank you for the opportunity to come in with a project, which has been very long in the history of our, our department trying to move it forward. And I'm with you tonight, Paul Semeda, who is a landscape architect that we've been working with on this project and also other projects, notably our tennis court rehabilitation and pickleball project over the last number of years. So falls with Greenman Peterson out in Mars Plains. And that was formerly Keller and Kirkpatrick, for those of you who've been around the planning world for a while. This is for the Baker Evans Farm Park. The history of this with us, the township been interested in acquiring the Baker Farm for a number of years. So I guess my tenure with the township started in 2007 and it was already on the discussion agenda at that time. It took us until 2014 to actually acquire the property. It was acquired with Township Open Space Trust Funds. It's 5.5 acres. We spun off a half, an acre of the property, which the Baker family retained. And that is to the, if you look at the parcel from Lake Valley Road, it's to the left-hand side. And the Baker family still resides in that, in that property. They've been the great stewards of the land. It was one of the few townships remaining agricultural lands for many, many years. By the time that, you know, the early 2000s rolled around, it was mostly working with storage with Mr. Baker Senior. He ran an electrical contracting business and we were able to negotiate with Mr. Baker and his, and his family to eventually acquire the, the open space there with the hopes that we could maintain some of the agricultural character along Lake Valley Road. So in the township's review, the Rosenhaus property that we purchased on Picatinny was probably our first foray into open space and farmland preservation, at least the landscape. And here's one that's a little bit more closely located in a dense population area. So we were happy to do that in 2014 for the acquisition. We immediately started working with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee to start to consider what the layout of what we would develop on this site. A, at that time, we, we really focused in on a more passive nature of this property. It is, while it's 5.5 acres, much of it is in very heavily steep sloped areas. And we didn't want to get involved with the, you know, trying to squeeze in things like athletic fields. We have lots of open field space in the township, so we, we felt that we were well stocked in that. But we did note that we, in this particular area, really do not have a playground for parents to bring their children. It is very close to the Fairchild neighborhood. Again, that's a very densely populated area without any playground facility for the township. And looking at other opportunities to keep some open field space. And notably, the, the hillside for many years by the Baker family approval allowed sledding on their property on the steep hillside. So we, we looked at an opportunity to maintain some sledding on that facility. We began the concept plan with our Parks and Rec Advisory Committee 2017, looking at playground design. We began the demolition of structures. There was an old barn, a couple of garage pieces, a couple of storage buildings. We did our due diligence with demolition of the structures, removal of asbestos we found on the site. We also had a, when we purchased the property, a full environmental review of the property to make sure that there were no contaminants. There was an apple orchard on that property, so we were concerned about various types of pesticide contaminations. It, it turned out to be a clean property. So real pleased to be able to move this into a play, essentially a play facility development. So at that point, we really ran headlong into the COVID issues and we kind of stepped back from the next design stage of that. But we are now, through that, we contracted with GPI in 2022 and working for that, for tonight, to give you essentially what is a plan for, really, I, I would say, not quite a passive park, but not completely active either. It's a mix of the two. And the central feature is, is a playground facility, which we would hope to keep in a farm theme. We're looking at farm themed and you'll see some of the potential graphics of playground equipment that we may be able to enter into that site today. So I'm going to turn it over to Paul to talk about the site a little bit more.
And before you do, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Bill, can you, just for the record, give your name and your position with the township?
My apologies. William Folsch, F-O-E-L-S-C-H. Sonya should might know that. And Director of Parks and Recreation for the Township of Morris.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Semeda. I'm a senior landscape architect and project manager with GPI. I've been with them 30 years, come November. I run all of our recreation design out of there. I also do site planning. I've been before various boards throughout the state. And I offer my expertise in, in doing the, the, the concept plan for this. What we did, and do I need to take this with me?
Yes. And while it's not a formal public hearing, again, perhaps the chair can recognize Mr. Smalda as a, an expert in the field of landscape architecture, correct?
Yes, I, go ahead. I recognize her expertise.
Thank you.
So when, when the project came to our office, we had kind of an envelope sketch to, to work from. The, the, the driving force on, on where we did the development on, on the site was the alignment of Lake Valley Road. The best place really to bring the, the driveway for the parking lot out was at the, kind of the apex of the, of the curve here. So we had site distance. And we, we did discuss this with the, the engineering department also. But as we get into final design, hopefully, we'll, we'll refine exactly where that's going to be with side triangles. I know there's an alignment, realignment of this road going on. So we're going to have to work with township engineering to, to make the, the site distance from here work. We're, we're looking at a fairly small parking lot, 23 parking spaces. Sidewalk, it goes back and, and we're going to bring that to a crosswalk somewhere along here to meet the new sidewalk, which is basically on the opposite side of, of Lake Valley Road. So we have, we do have, we will have walking access to the facility. And then once we're, once inside, we, we did concentrate the, the developed area right in the, the center so that we had, we left everything basically open around that. A little bit to the right, this, this green area here. And I do have half scales, if anyone needs a half scale to look at or they can see. I, I.
I put a half scale in of the original plan.
Yeah, I, I do have color ones just in case. So what Bill was talking about, we have a playground here. The, the green is, and, and a little bit of brown edge is the fall attenuation surface, which, which we will need. We, we worked with a, one of the playground companies to make sure that we had correct fall areas and, and we'll, we'll work with them to make sure that that surfaces the correct attenuation fall safety, so that if someone falls off the equipment, they, they have a much better chance of, of not being injured. Connected to the, the playground, we have a small shade structure, just a place where we can put two or three picnic tables underneath so that if, if family comes, they have a place they can eat. They can get into the shade. Or if they're out there and it starts raining and they, they want to get in underneath something, they have a place to do it. It's not going to be any kind of large pavilion where we have parties and things. It's, it's really for whoever's using the playground so that they have a place to, to get out of the sun. That's, that's pretty important on, in playgrounds, in my opinion. Little bit down between Lake Valley Road and, and the playground, we're looking at a, a sand volleyball court. So it's, it basically, it's not a, an impervious surface, so it, it really does help us with stormwater. And so that's the, really the developed area of the, of the park. Then we have, there'll be a, a small connection to a, a walking trail. And the walking trail is going to be through, basically through meadow. It's going to be a, a, a moan trail. We're not going to develop it with gravel or, or any kind of, of hard surface. It's going to be a soft surface so that, and, and one of the reasons for that is to keep the integrity of the sledding hill over here. We don't want to, we don't want to add little shelves, but they have to go up and over all the time. We want to keep that so that the, the slope is, is down and, and it's, it reduces the risk of injury. So that's about a third of a mile walking trail, depending on, on how it gets, gets moaned that year. But we'll, we'll try to do it the same every year. So people have an idea, if they're coming out to walk a mile, they have to do three laps on it. We got, we got, we're trying to do it so that, I know when I go walking, I like to know how far I've gone so that you, you get a little goal at the end. And then sledding hill, this will be meadow during the summer or, or moan on the flatter part. So we have just an open field so that if a parent comes in or, or some kids come in, they can even have a, a pickup baseball game, which doesn't much happen anymore. Same thing on, on the, on the other side of the parking lot. We're looking just for open play space so kids can run around, play tag, just games, frisbee, whatever they want to play. So we don't have, they can do without structure. They can structure their own games. And then the only other thing that, that we really need to be concerned about on this project is, is stormwater to meet the, the state stormwater regulations. We are, we do have this area in the center, which was impervious cover at, at, at an earlier time. So we're going to use some of that impervious coverage and then find out what our, our, our overage is and find out exactly where we, what we need to do for, for stormwater at that point. We will have to do some stormwater, even if, if we don't go over the impervious, but we do have more than an acre of disturbance. So we will, and we'll work with the township to make sure that, that, that will, will work. And our tie-in is to the stormwater is somewhere down this way. We just have to see what happens with the road improvements and if there's any other drain, drainage going in that we can tie into. But we don't know that yet. Did I miss anything, Bill?
Pretty simple.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, maybe just to remind the board, because this isn't our typical public hearing. The, as mentioned, it's a courtesy review. The, any, we don't have conditions of approval, but we can make recommendations to the township as a governing body, as a, as a public entity, notwithstanding being exempt from zoning. And, and actually, and if you'll bear with me one moment. I just wanted to, it may help to hear at least two brief answers to question, to two questions we're about to ask from our planner. Because with respect to this being a capital improvement project, the primary inquiry by the board, in addition to making any recommendations they wish, the board may wish to make, is whether this proposal is substantially consistent with the master plan as part of our courtesy review. So, Mr. Phillips, is it so in your opinion?
Yeah, and I mean, basically, the underlying zoning here envisions and permits playgrounds and parks. And that the master plan sort of piggybacks the existing zoning designations.
Consistent with the recreational objectives set forth in those, in the master plan?
Correct.
And then the primary inquiry from a site plan perspective, again, even though the township is exempt from zoning, is under the Hills of Troy case. The, whether the township is reasonably exercising its authority in the opinion of the board from a planning perspective. is reasonably exercising its authority in the opinion of the board from a planning perspective. So I'd ask the same question of Mr. Phillips, if he can opine and answer that question.
Well, yeah, I think the short answer is yes, for the reasons that you articulated.
Yeah. The, I guess it was, was that a leading question? No, that's not a question. You don't have to answer.
You're not in the court of law.
That's right, that's right, that's right, that's right. The, so nothing further, but of course, other board members, you know, can ask questions, give input, recommendations, et cetera.
Mr. Leso.
Yeah, just when you talked about stormwater, are you talking about like culverts, chargers?
Well, the new stormwater rules get into, into green infrastructure. We're going to do it as green as possible. We may do some infiltration in underneath the parking lot itself. We haven't really gotten into it. We don't know what the soils are that we're working with, but we will have to, there will be an infiltration, and we will have to do probably some quantity stormwater.
There's no actual basin, you're not taking any?
We're trying not to. We're absolutely trying not to. Would like to, would like to do basin in underneath the parking lot and anything, we may do some underground storage as opposed to open basin on top. We really don't want to put a basin in here, because it does take away from the, from the, from the park and the play area.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, in order.
Thank you. I think it looks great, and I think it's going to really be a great addition to this space. I'm really excited about it. I would be remiss to not speak out for parents everywhere and asking if there's not a bathroom planned for this.
In this space, in this space, we do not have a bathroom plate, unless we, for most, most of our parks, we do not have bathroom facilities.
That's the problem.
And it is a problem. I understand that, and likely, just like most of our parks, infrastructure-wise, be without a bathroom at some point, perhaps we can develop one. This one might be a little easier to develop a restroom facility at a later time.
Is that just a funding consideration at this time?
I'm sorry.
Is that mainly a funding consideration at this time?
Yes. And we thought us to establish the, this park, and we started up and get something in the ground on the town's acquisition for a number of years. We would be servicing it with portable toilets to start. Nobody really loves them, but they are functional.
It's better than nothing.
Any other questions?
Yeah, if I may, from here?
Oh, Mr. Barrett?
Yeah, so one question for you. So it looks like the park is contemplated for adult use as well as children's use, get the walk in that. Do you think 23 parking spaces is enough to sort of accommodate?
It's probably enough, it's probably enough for the day-to-day, just like any, any other development. Where, where's the balance come in? 23 on a, on a full sledding day, 50 probably wouldn't work here, but then we're going to take up the whole park with, with parking that will be empty probably for 80% of the time the park is being used. So it's, it's, it's kind of a trade-off that, that we're trying not to put a lot of infrastructure into this facility.
Mr. Jim?
For the playground, the, I think the small picnic shelter, the 23 parking spots will probably not even be used most of the time. But Mr. May, you made us absolutely correct with sledding. We have noted over the years that many of the sledders come in by foot from the neighborhood close by, and don't think this would be necessarily a destination sledding area, which is only not a big hill nor a long one. You factor in the fact that Villa Walsh has pretty much shut down their sledding hills, so that could, that could be a factor at this point. But there's security issues and policing issues at Villa Walsh, which have unfortunately turned that off as a viable location for sledding. The county still has sledding.
I'd like to just make a comment. There is additional parking just up the street at the ball field, the corner of Mill and Lake Valley Road. It's a very short walk. I used to live in the neighborhood, so I'm very familiar with it. So if there were a need for overflow parking, parking just up the street and walking down to the hill should be fine. And I just otherwise want to comment that this is a really good use of this land. I was a neighbor of this property when the Bakers owned it and they had horses and whatnot, so I'm happy to see us putting it to good use for the residents of our community. I think this is a really good plan, and I think you did a good job on it.
If I may, just to comment, the sidewalk that will hopefully be installed along Lake Valley Road is really important with that issue of the overflow parking.
Right.
That will make this really work very well. Plus, it's a, it's an opportunity for those people from the Fairchild neighborhood to come down along Mill and make their way over to the park without going into Lake Valley Road itself. So it is something we've been working with the engineering department in tandem for this parcel.
Along those lines, yeah, I think that the sidewalk there is very important. Has there been any consideration of extending the sidewalk on the other side of the street down towards Lake Avenue? There's about a 600-foot gap there on the sidewalk that, to that neighborhood, and to Raskin Road, which would be a sidewalk then to all the neighborhood, the neighborhoods behind that have a sidewalk.
I can't speak to the engineering department's plans on the entire sidewalk, maybe they? Yeah, there is a line item in the, in the budget for the design and the construction from this site down to Lake Road.
Okay.
And then across to Patriots Path.
Okay.
And the ballpark on the other side, across from the sewer plant.
Because I understand there's lots of issues and difficulties with the sidewalk the other direction.
We're putting the sidewalk on the, on the stream side of the road, because topographically it doesn't work on the other side, and we'd screw up a couple driveways over there. So what we're going to do, it's easier to move the roads and deal with all the, all the topographic problems. So we've got that in the works. We estimated out the costs, and we gave them to administration so that they could start a seed budget line item for that.
But there is a line item there for the sidewalk the other direction on the other side. Okay, thank you.
Because right off the end of this project, there is sidewalk for, I forget the sidewalk, I forget the street right.
So one block from Raskin Road on, towards this.
No.
It's like four lots between.
Yeah.
Between here and the sidewalk.
We'll be connecting to existing sidewalks as we continue it down the road, yes.
That's, that's really good. I mean, I hate to see you put a, kind of a passive recreational facility in there and then you force people to walk, drive to it.
Yeah, or walk in the street.
Yeah, or walk in the street, yeah. No, thank you.
It's in the works.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks. Yeah, one question that occurred to me when I look at the plan, I don't see any benches on here.
Actually, there are around the play area in underneath the trees. It's hard to see them.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The graphic that's there, but I think there's four or five benches up on the outside of the play area.
Okay, good. Yeah, I think that's important.
It's very important, and, and they have to be outside of those, of those clear areas for the play equipment, and I'm trying to get them in underneath some trees so that the parents have some.
Yeah.
And they, and they can be adjacent to where their, their younger children are playing on here. Your older children, they're probably just going to go out there and parents are going to do whatever they're going to do.
Did you, at what point will you give further consideration to the, the type of playground equipment?
That's on this board right here. It's, we're looking, we're looking at a couple different companies that manufacture, but we're looking at a farm-themed kind of thing, a tractor, you know, looks like some, some, some corn in here and, and just hay bales and just something that's, that's more farm and safety, the typical stuff you would, you would find in the playground. But there's, we're still, we're still going back and forth with some manufacturers to see what, you know, if we can get barn kind of thing or.
Is it directed more toward younger children or a full range?
Our main focus on this playground is, there are segments of playground design that are for ages two to six and then six to 12, and there's also equipment that's designed for two to 12. It all depends, you have to look through the catalogs and see what they're designed for, but our focus here has been really looking for the younger child that may come here with a parent down, particularly from the neighborhoods, younger, but not to exclude the older ones. So we're likely looking at equipment of both two to six age groups as well as two to 12. The climber that you see in the, is really a two to 12. It's available for, you know, with supervision for the younger age groups as well as the younger. And the climbing, you know, like the hay bales, it's something that the younger children will probably attempt to do as well.
Thank you. Also, could you say a little more about the soft material that you're envisioning for the trail? And like, in the winter, you could sled over it. I'm not.
Well, go ahead.
I'm sorry, we're not looking to put any material down the ground. We're just going to take a five or six-foot mower and, and mow a trail through the, through the meadow and not put any kind of material down, mainly because it's fairly steep, it and to keep this open and not have, it has four bumps in here.
Yeah.
We don't want that. We want it, we want to keep that maintained. It's not going to be, it's going to be difficult to walk some days if it's a little wet, but it, it'll be, it'll be walkable.
Yeah, the, actually, the slope actually drains very well over the years that we've owned it. We do mow it now. We have a steep slope mower that we keep the sledding hill essentially open, just so we don't get woody invasives in there, and we'll be working around the path on the top of the hill. We really want to maintain as much meadow on the, on the upper plateau, if you will, that backs up to Evans Farm Road, to make sure that we keep some really nice buffers there. It is a very steep slope. If anybody's walked that hillside, you know that you've walked it, and we'll probably have some benches along the way on that, that steep slope going up, just because it is, you know you've hiked it.
Yeah. I like the benches up there, too.
Will be.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Evans?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. I applaud design. Thank you, Paul and Bill, for this. It's a, it's a great use of taxpayer money to put in this recreation. Just a quick question, I'm assuming that this park is going to be open during daylight hours only, so there's no lighting required that would disturb the neighbors or anything like that?
Our only light consideration right now would be the, the area at the entrance, the parking, there's actually a, I believe there's a street light there, and maybe a single light on the, at the head of the parking lot.
Right, so the park will be closed.
And very likely, we're trying to move over to solar lighting installations, so that we don't have, have to run power lines up there.
Okay. Also, for the sand volleyball court, unlike Collinsville where there was one, this is a little bit more of a rural kind of area part of town. Is there any plan to keep the wildlife out of the sand?
I, I think that, that's a hard thing. Anytime. Yeah, this is actually a relocation of our, our sand volleyball court from Strider Pool and the picnic zone. We have the, we have all the materials to actually make the move, if you will. The sand was donated to the township, the embedding materials, you know, the border materials were also donated to the township. We just found it no longer appropriate with the type of surface that we have in the swim pool to be able to hold a sand volleyball court close to a swimming pool. It just tracks in sand. So we, we feel it's a really nice addition to the small picnic area. We envision this as a place where a family can take a, a couple of their, you know, visiting family members down for a picnic, play some sand volleyball, or maybe, you know, some others will want to come in, but it's, it's really a pretty low-profile use there. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. A couple of questions. I, I'm curious what you think the schedule for this is likely to be? If you could estimate when this project would be completed or perhaps speculate, it sounds like there are several steps required, one of which is to relocate the street slightly, which might require budgetary approval first.
The park's going to be in before the street is done, yeah.
The park will be in before the street?
We apparently is, are going to have to go after a DEP permit to move the street over because of the proximity to the street.
But if the location of the driveway is dependent on how the street is relocated?
Well, we'll have it designed by then. They'll be able to build based on our design, and they may have to build a little bit out into the street a little bit, so that when we come through with the roadway realignment, it'll match up with their driveway.
When do you think the roadway realignment will happen?
It hasn't been budgeted, and we're over a quarter million dollars.
2025 at the earliest?
Twenty, if it gets budgeted a little this year and a little next year, we'll be looking at construction after June of next year, maybe, depending on how well we get out of DEP.
Sounds like you mean definitely, definitely after June of next year.
In the next few years.
And what about the park?
So we have some funding in place for the, the playground function of the park, but not all of the amenities. We haven't really even gone into a full cost estimate on this at this time. Once we move into the next phase, we would anticipate having any additional funding submitted for the township's capital budget in 2024, but it, our existing funding may allow us to start to do some of the improvements on site even earlier than that. Our next, really, to finish up the grading plan, we've talked about the grading that we need to do. We've done quite a bit of grading and have our own ability to do some of the berm, the sledding hill berm, things like that with soils, what we've stockpiled on site over the last number of years. We actually pulled some of the soils from the swim pool projects that we've had in the mid 2010s, if you will, to be able to stockpile it, because we knew we were going to do some berming over here. Again, we didn't exactly know where it would be or where the sidewalk would be, but now with the township's involvement in planning and doing the design work for the sidewalk, we're pretty sure that that sidewalk is something that we're not going to have to run through the park, it's going to stay across the roadway on the stream side, so we didn't have to really pull that into the park design. That saves the park design some dollars. So the playground is the main focus, but great, getting the site graded to where we need it to be is probably the biggest issue to start. Some of that can be done in-house.
It sounds like putting that berm in is a safety issue that you might want to address earlier.
Yeah, yeah, and we have the soil there to do it. Actually, the soil's in the way. If we don't, if we don't build the berm, we're going to have to spread that soil out about, but we had planned for that very purpose.
Okay.
Just dive in.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One quick follow-up. So I don't want to belabor the point about the sand volleyball, but it strikes me as a little bit odd, given the demographics, you anticipate using a park two to six, and I think you said six to 12 for the picnic, but it, it strikes me that the sand volleyball doesn't match there. Those age groups, I just wondered, did the township survey parents with kids in those two age groups to see what makes the most sense?
Yeah, we have a, we have a community survey from 2000 and, I believe it was 19 we completed it. Volleyball is a popular activity. We saw it as, as complimentary to the, the sort of the family picnic type of opportunity that this, this site would have. The playground is going to have a wide root range of ages, so I, it's, it's, it's our best guess at this point that it would be something that would work for us. And again, the cost is low because we already have it essentially available to go.
So kids, two to six, are playing volleyball?
No, but older kids will and families will, and quite frankly, if they want to go play badminton on it, that's fine, too. It's a, it's a multi-purpose facility, it's just, you know, drained off into the sand.
Okay. This strikes me as odd.
Any other comments from the board? Professionals have anything? Anything, anything more? I will open up for questions from the public or, yes, go ahead, come up to the microphone, this one, and please state your name and address.
My name's Bob Good. My wife is Terry. We live at 15 Evans Farm Road, been there. We live at 15 Evans Farm Road, been there for 52 years. We have a lot of experience with the, the farm behind us. Over the years, a couple of things have bothered us. One is dogs, the other is ATVs, and the other is weeds. We've gotten a lot of weeds from the farm. So I was wondering whether you were going to maintain that border around the, the top of the hill as you are now and maybe even widening it a little, widening it a little bit. And then the other thing is I'd like to know what the hours of operation will be and whether you're anticipating putting solar panels up there and whether it's likely to become a hangout like some parks do.
I'll, I'll try to address them as we go forward. In terms of the, the perimeter mowing that we've been doing to try to keep the vegetation down around the strip, we will continue to do that. It's really not part of the.
In addition to the path?
In addition to the path, yeah. I mean, it's, we're trying to keep it away from the, the neighboring property line as well, so that the path is essentially pulled in to the, the edge of the, of the slope as, at the top of the slope. But we will maintain that, that mode strip around it because we do understand that, you know, we don't want everything there. It is our hope that we can improve the, the meadow to a pollinator meadow that does have, you know, it is a, a pretty low cost and, you know, green positive, if you will, use of the property. As to the lighting, we do not plan any solar panels on that land. It would be inappropriate to do so. The only solar panel might be on the actual light at the head of the parking lot, and that's just to provide the downward light. So there would be some opportunity for anybody driving by, particularly our, our township police force, to make sure there's nobody parked in there after, after hours. Our hours of operation are essentially dawn to dusk. So when sundown, sundown goes down, they should be not using the park. I don't know if I addressed them all. Did I miss one for you?
Dogs and ATV?
Well, okay, dogs, our dog policy is that dogs must be on leash so that they're walking their dogs around the property. It must be on a leash. And ATVs, I, I understand that there are some in the neighborhood. We, we actually did an intercept with our township police on one of our parks about a month ago. Fortunately, those individuals were detained and will probably pay some restitution on some small damages, but we, we do not permit ATVs and motorized vehicles outside of the existing paved area. That would be the parking lot.
Okay. And how about the hangout business?
The hangout is, you know, I, we do not have a, a township ranger force that goes out from place to place, although we are now beginning to implement a, essentially going along with our pickleball issues and monitoring, we are starting to put some personnel out on sporadic times and getting around the properties to supplement some of the essential visitation issues that we might have. So it is someplace that we would expect that the township police force would keep an eye on for us after hours. We tend to not have a lot of issues with that, but you know, as a, as a remote site, you know, it's right along Lake Valley Road, so I don't think it's all that remote. But it is a place where we could have one of our evening personnel come in and just to make sure that somebody is not there later in the day.
Is it going to be an attendant for summer activities like sewing class or something like that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat, please?
Is there going to be an attendant?
No, we would not have an, an attendant at that location.
Okay.
Unless it turns into a spot where, you know, the neighborhood would liken it a playground, a morning playground program, which we've had in some of our other parks. And we tend to have a, most of those at the schools or some of the larger visitation parks with more parking right now. But we do have, for example, Saunders and Greenfield, they have some small playground activities on the mornings during the summertime.
Mm-hmm.
So I can't say we wouldn't do it there. It could possibly happen. Usually they're done by 12:30, 1 o'clock in the afternoon.
Good. I like it.
Well, I hope we're good neighbors to you, Mr. Evans. Any other questions from the public? Yes, okay, please.
My name is Bob Azkoff and I live at 109 Lake Valley Road. And I received the certified letter a couple of weeks ago telling me about the plans to build this playground across the street. I'm hearing a lot of other things that weren't mentioned in that letter. First of all, this, it seems like this has been planned for a long, long time and a lot of money has been spent. And looking at all your faces, I feel like I'm wasting my time tonight and yours, but let me say what I want to say. You know, there's total disregard and disrespect to the neighbors that this is really going to affect that live right across the street and to the side of this planned build out. So I'm opposed to it. I moved here 38 years ago and the reason my wife and I bought this house was because of what was across the street. And it's my understanding when the property was sold, it was going to remain open space. This is no longer open space. This is a, so I just want to express my point of view. Now you're bringing up putting a sidewalk in, which is on my property, which I'll have to maintain and clear when there's snow. You know, I don't want to do that. I'm not 38 years old. So I'm opposed to this, so just want to let you know. I know, Ms. Murphy, you said you lived in the neighborhood. You no longer do.
144, yeah.
Okay, but me and some of my neighbors are directly across the street and this is going to affect us more than anybody else. You people probably won't hear anything, you won't see anything, but we will. So I don't like the idea. I think we have enough playgrounds and I've been in the area long enough, you drive by them, they're empty. They go unused. You have plenty, you have a state-of-the-art playground at Greystone. I know it's not the township. You have it at Granus, you have it by the pool, there's playgrounds at every school. Why do we need another one? You know, I don't like the idea of 23 paved parking spaces across the street. So thank you for listening. I saw my neighbors have something else to say.
Thank you. I just, a second, before we get into more comments, these really should be just questions for about what has been presented. You have a chance for comments on the application as a whole later, but the procedure generally questions for the, for the, you know, what has been, oh, like, no, I understand. And I didn't want to cut you off in midpoint, but.
But I feel it's proven, and I think it's so far gone, you know, it's total disregard to people that are protecting it most.
So just, do you have questions or comments?
I have a question.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Certainly since this is an informal courtesy review, if you wish to expedite matters, people can ask questions and make comments at the same time. I wasn't swearing anyone in purposefully because it's not a formal public hearing. I just put that option out there.
Okay, yeah. And I don't know if there's any more comments or questions from anyone here, so I think, go ahead with any questions or comments that you might have at this point.
Well, my, I have a question.
Name it, name and address first.
My name's Michelle Rosenfeld. I live at 111 Lake Valley Road. According to this map, the parking lot is going to be directly across the street from my property. So my question is, how are you going to prevent heavy rainwater and flooding from not flooding my driveway and my property? That is my, besides losing my view, my number one concern. I am concerned that this rainwater from this parking lot is going to go whoosh down to my property. And I think that is a very valid concern. This is literally, this is the parking lot, this is my house. It is directly across. And we do get to be rid of it.
Yes, you got it. Any, any comments or any, you know, are they engineering? Because I don't know more.
We're still at the concept stage, but the road, as far as I know, will be crowned and we will look at, we, we need to maintain the state stormwater rules, which we are working under. We cannot affect property off-site and there are ways to keep that water from going like trench drains. There, there, there are ways to attenuate any stormwater coming down that driveway. And we're looking at very little coming down that driveway. We're probably looking at the parking stalls in, in pervious pavers or pervious pavement so that most of the stormwater will be handled in, in the parking stalls themselves.
Any further comments, Mr. Anderson?
No.
Support?
No, we haven't done a design on the road. We, we may bring drainage up as far as this, this driveway if necessary.
May bring what?
Drainage up from the intersection. But we haven't done a design yet. We haven't even surveyed it yet.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from, from the public? I hear none. We'll close that section. Cory, what do you think?
I have one question.
Yes.
So we're having this courtesy review this evening. Are there any other opportunities where the public can monitor what's going on, follow what's going on, or is this the only public review?
This would be, as far as I know, the only planning board review in that it's a, a capital improvement review by the planning board. The courtesy review substantially consisted with the master plan as well as it's a, a site plan application, notwithstanding the fact that the township does not have to, it's not, is exempt from zoning. What other, might, what else might take place at the township committee level or recreation or otherwise? I wouldn't know in the process. I would imagine though there'd be communications and things happening in our township prospectively, but I don't know that there would be any other planning board aspects of this, of the process, in, planning board input in the process.
So I, this, I understand it's a courtesy review, but it does require a vote?
Yeah, we, correct. We'll, we'll have a resolution memorializing. And again, I think you heard our planner as well as the, I almost had the app, well, the township's professional with respect to both consistency of the master plan as well as the reasonable exercise of the authority of the township. And if the board wishes to make any recommendations, again, not conditions, but recommendations to the township in the context of this application, or I should say this review, then certainly the board has discretion to make those recommendations. We will memorialize.
Yes, Mr. Flowers.
I just had a question. So the gentleman from 109 Lake Valley had mentioned that this space was bought with funds from the open space fund. And, you know, now he's saying this isn't going to be open space anymore, so, you know, that didn't seem right to him. I didn't hear any comments on that. Can we, can that be addressed?
Well, the township has purchased open space and has acquired other lands for public recreation for, for many years. Open space funding for the trust fund is available for both essentially outdoor recreation facilities and/or passive lands. So some of the lands that we have purchased have gone into trails and some of those lands we are, we're looking at as more active recreation site. This is a more of a passive site in terms of our view, although, you know, we do have some parking, people will visit this park. There'll be an opportunity to walk around and visit the playground, but it is unlike most of our other parks where we have large groups of individuals who come to use athletic fields that are scattered around the township. We're, we've been trying over the years to kind of focus some of our, our, our larger athletic groups onto parks which aren't in the middle of neighborhoods to allow neighborhoods to have better enjoyment of some of their parks rather than having completely captured by sports teams all the time.
I don't know if some of this might be more for Mr. Warner, but I mean, is, is putting a parking lot, is it still open space at that point? You know, does this parking lot itself violate, you know, a, an open space, you know, what it would be? You know, I'm trying, I'm trying to get some more voice to the people that were talking before because I don't know that those concerns were directed for us.
Sure. I mean, to a large extent, frankly, I'd have to defer to township, the township, but from my understanding, you can utilize open space funds for not only passive recreation but also active recreation. And it's presumed that parking facilities and other associated facilities and infrastructure are going to be a part of that. So whether you want to consider this passive or active recreation or open space or all of the above, certainly the township wouldn't be able to utilize the funds if, if did not qualify.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Michelle.
I'd like to make a motion. We, from our perspective, we think this is a good plan. It's a good use of the land from a passive activity for the neighborhood and also for the greater township of Mars.
And, and if I may, Mr. Chairman and, and board member less as well, I, I would incorporate, unless you tell me otherwise, that this is substantially consistent with the master plan and reasonable exercise of the township's authority under the appropriate statutory case law and would include any recommendations if, board member or less or anyone else wanted to add any recommendations to that motion.
I'd like to amend my emotion. Based upon counsel advice.
I'd like to amend the, the motion to add a recommendation to the township to make sure that there be no additional stormwater flow across Lake Valley, Valley Road into the neighbors across the street from the park. I think, I do think that's very important.
I'll second all the above.
Any, any comments? Any other? Okay, we have a motion and a second. And.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I would like to make another comment, which is the public had some comments about whether another park was needed, and I don't feel as a board member of this board that I can really talk about whether in the overall plan for parks for the township, whether this park is necessary to, to the township as a whole. I, I don't really think, think that's our role, but I do think that this park is a, is a, is consistent with the master plan and that it's an attractive use of this particular property. And I hope that it's used in a way that's helpful to the township and not overused, not crowded and not an annoyance to the neighbors, but something that they find they can live with and be happy with.
And if I could add one more thing, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Because I'm very sympathetic to the idea that when we moved here, it was a certain way. I've been this way for 20 years, 30 years, 40 years. That's all true. And we see time and time again, though, you can't control what people are going to do, sell the property, rezone it. You go from one house on five acres to 18 townhouses on five acres. And so those things are all legitimate possibilities. And when we look at the master plan, what we want township to look like, includes open space and not too dense. And the board of adjustment, the planning board, we're always faced with, this was this then. You can't tell someone what they can and cannot do with their property. They come to us with a proposal. Does it meet the zone? Does it not meet the zone? We can't tell them, we don't want you to do this. We don't have that authority. We are very fortunate that this property can be available. We were very fortunate that this property came available and they agreed to sell it to the township. They didn't have to do that. They could have said, you know what? I can make a lot of money rezoning it for townhouses. So you may not like the idea of 23 parking spaces and a volleyball court. We look at it, and I personally look at it because of my role here on the Board of Adjustment, of what it could have been. It could have been something that you really wouldn't have wanted whatsoever. So this, in my view, if it's considered an evil, it's the least of all evils that you can come across. I think it's a very important thing to consider going forward and thinking about, well, I want things the way it was a long time ago. We can't control that. So I just felt like I needed to say that.
Any other comments?
I just want to applaud Ed's comment. That's absolutely correct. And we all face that, no matter where we live in Morris Township. And I, for one, live in a community that backed up two woods and I was told that it was going to be five acre zoning for the rest of my life. And unfortunately, the township had to change that to seven or eight townhouses per acre. And it is what it is. It's progress. And I think I want to applaud that, Ed. That's, that's a good comment. And I feel bad for everybody that sees something that they thought was going to be there in perpetuity, change. But your point is really valid. I would love to see the woods behind me become a park as opposed to townhomes.
I'll make one comment. I also want to applaud what, what Ed said. It's really true. You know, it's, it's part of just the cycle of life and in any town that there's going to be change. That's the only constant in life is that there's going to be change. And it is, you know, considering that there could have been a different use for that. It could have been sold to a developer. And none of us up here would have really been, had, had a whole lot to say about it if it was something that was brought before us. As part of the township committee, I can tell you that we believe that the town is always in a state of continuous improvement and that this, in keeping with the master plan, is part of the continuous improvement and that over time, the park is going to be a major benefit to the local, not only the local residents, but all the folks that might just drive there. And it might actually help improve your property values. So I would say, give it time. If there's things that we need to change about the park based on actual usage, we will consider it absolutely. And I'm going to tell you that as part of the, being on the chair of the Parks and Rec Standing Committee.
Any other comments?
I will just add, I too applaud Ed's comments. There's a lot of merit in that. At the same time, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to the public's desire to know what's going on, to have the opportunity to participate. It's very helpful as a board member to hear from the public, to hear what people's concerns are. And I saw like I'm sympathetic to that. And apparently this will be the last public meeting on this, as I'm understanding it. But if there are additional things such as the sidewalk, there will be public meetings as part of that. And it's important for the public to pay attention to what's going on and be informed and participate. And I think it benefits everyone when the plans can be shared, the public can have their input, ask questions, make suggestions. So I, that's my addition to your comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Why weren't the property owners, all this brought to their attention when you were making these plans? This is a totally shock to the whole neighborhood. I mean, so much had been done and planned and we had no idea this was going on.
Do you? Try to respond to that.
Progress is progress. I understand that, but it's not going to affect any of you. It's going to affect us.
Well, I, you know, I just, if you form as full speaks, I mean, you know, maybe I'm a little more involved, but I have been aware of it ever since they purchased the property. And there have been, there have been things on the website and discussions and mentions of the Baker Evans Farm property and what things are going. You know, not, not public meetings necessarily, but there has been information that the township is, has been contemplating doing things with it. They bought it and there've been activity over there. And a phone call to the administration, if you had questions about what was happening is, is, is very possible. You didn't notice that they were tearing the buildings down? The building, the barn that was, that sat there? Okay. And you, right. And you had. No. But had you had any questions, the township would be very willing to answer your questions about what was going on.
I've had a lot of questions if I knew about the sidewalk, if I knew about the parking lot and the volleyball court. This is kind of my lifestyle. Open, it was in the newspaper, open space, walking paths, sleigh riding and natural habitat for wildlife. That was the article. And I haven't heard anything since. Again, I don't want to be responsible for shoveling a sidewalk that's not there now. Put it on the other side in front of the park.
It's a separate project.
The sidewalks and street line will be a separate, there will be separate meetings on that. You will be notified of those too, as part of the, when, you know, when that design is further along, the actual plans, that's part of the process also.
I'm sorry. It's just not affecting you people like it's affecting us. It's changing the whole landscape of what I'm growing to love. The reason I came here, the reason I bought that property, open space.
Well, to add it on to Mr. Benoit and other comments is that everything that comes up before the board, that before here affects somebody negatively. And it is one of the more difficult parts of being on the board is to weigh the needs and the desires and the wants and the rights of those people against, you know, the right, the needs and wants and rights of the community as a whole. And it's, it's, you know, it's a judgment call. It's very difficult. You're right. I don't live there and I'm not directly impacted. But I'm also have to think about the people that live there and want access to a park. And the master plan has, for a long time, called for things like this.
People live in this area, drive around, they're empty. They're empty. Most of the time, there's nobody in them. Do we need another one, an even bigger one?
Like, if I may.
It does add to the quality of life of the town as a whole. I think that's what Chairman is saying. And it's nice to have them spread throughout the town also. Whether they're used or not, we'll have to see. I mean, like I said before, time will tell how the park is used and if there needs to be a reevaluation of the features of the park, it'll be, it'll be certainly come under consideration.
And, Mr. Chairman, the, the difficult decisions that you just referenced accurately that are made by the board members, I just want to remind the public that these board members are residents, all nine of whom are here this evening on the dais and the two of whom alternates are here, not on the dais, on a voluntary basis to serve the township as a whole. So they're not only difficult decisions, but it's a lot of time and effort spent with the compensation being knowing that you've done a volunteer service for your fellow residents in the township. That's the compensation. So if anything, perhaps the board members, all of whom are here this evening, all 11 should be applauded, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any other comments?
I guess we have a motion and it's been seconded. Sylvia, did you call her? Sonia, sorry.
Mr. Quillen?
Yes.
Mr. Rabbit?
Yes.
Mr. Nunn?
Yes.
Mr. Alleso?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benwater?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. By.
Yes. Okay. Now I can turn my agenda over. And we can move on to the next item. PB 16 dash 22, Order of St. Benedict of New Jersey, St. Mary's Abbey. Sonia, you want to introduce it for us?
Yes, Mr. Kennedy. This is PB 16 dash 22, Order of St. Benedict of New Jersey slash St. Mary's Abbey. Block 4501, Lot 201, 230 Mendham Road, the OS is the zone. Applicant proposes a two-story addition to the existing St. Mary's Abbey monastery.
And Mr. Chairman, while counsel and is making his way to the microphone, the, I did have an opportunity, as I mentioned, last meeting, to review the content of the notice, found it to be sufficient, found it to be properly served by way of certified mail in a timely fashion and published in a timely fashion. But as previously mentioned and as, it was published in a timely fashion, but apparently in the Asbury Park Press, which is getting, for some reason, our, our publications too often. The, so applicant's counsel has republished. We mentioned last meeting, the matter was carried without further certified mail and personal notice, but with further publication notice. I did have an opportunity to review that notice was published in the local paper and it was done on March 9th, more than 10 days in advance of this evening. So now I can say that the notice was sufficient and timely served in all respects. So the board does have jurisdiction to hear and decide the application this evening.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members. My name is Martin Newmark. I'm with the Porgio Bronberg and Newman. I represent the applicant. This evening, we have three individuals who perhaps should be sworn at this time. The first would be Brother Paul Divney. Then we have Stephen Aludo, the architect, and Jamie Giorentano, who is the project engineer. And they are here. Are they all? All gather around?
Or at least stand to raise your right hand, please, along with our board professionals, Mr. Phillips and Mr. Hanson, do all of five of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you all.
With the permission of the board, we're going to begin with Mr. Aludo, who's an architect and who will tell you right now that he is licensed and good standing and experienced in the field of architecture.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Stephen Aludo, A-L-U-O-T-T-O. I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey and president of NK Architects headquartered in Morristown, New Jersey.
And your license is in good standing?
Yes.
And have you testified before this board before on similar matters?
I have.
Now for the gentleman who's an expert in the field of architecture? Being accepted as such? Mr. Ludo, I'm going to ask you, if you don't mind, to tell the board how the monastery is used at the present time and what the addition that is proposed will be used for.
Certainly. The application at hand addresses a new entry addition to the existing monastery building. The monastery building within St. Mary's Abbey is the structure, the residential component for the monastic community. That facility has undergone an initial phase of interior renovations a few years back to renovate the existing living quarters to more modern conditions. Those interior renovations are proposed to continue to the balance of the residential units within the existing structure and existing footprint. And the application this evening proposes a new entry addition, new construction of approximately 1,232 square feet, two-story addition at the entry. The purpose of this addition can be summarized in addressing three needs of the current monastic community and the facility itself. The first being that there, there does not exist currently compliant accessibility into the building. That is to say, there is not, not handicap parking that is adjacent to the entry nor an accessible path from handicap parking to the entry of the building and, and into the building itself. That's need number one. Need number two is the monastic community provides services to the Del Barton community and the community at large in terms of programs predominantly pre-Canaan services for engaged couples soon to be married. So the original building being constructed in the mid 60s, there were, there were different needs and different minimal interaction with the public. Today, there, there is increased interaction and visitation to the building from the general public. The existing entry has very, very minimal waiting area accommodations. So, so this proposed addition would accommodate a more functional entry, a more secure entry, a larger waiting area for the public that interacts with the monastic community. The third issue or reason for this addition is that the monastic community, the residents themselves are in need of more common area. There's more common interaction within the residential facility, common areas, common functions for, for laundry and, and interaction and, and, and meeting together. There is a need for that. So this addition does, on the second level, as I will show you shortly in, in the, the building design, provides a common meeting room for the community on the second level.
The, as proposed, can you tell the board the, the number of people who reside there at the present time?
There are currently 20 residents within the existing facility.
And does this addition anticipate additional residents?
It does not.
The, the board is pretty familiar with the property as such, and I think I can state that it consists of approximately 165 acres. You have an exhibit that would kind of show the, the board, keeping in mind that this is pretty much in the center of the 165 acres. What is Exhibit A marked with today's date?
Exhibit A1 marked with today's date, March 20th, 2023, shows a partial site plan of 165 acres, but does show the majority of St. Mary's Abbey complex. In the center is the proposed project shown here. And then slightly to the north is the Vincent House, which was recently renovated to a retreat center. And then the, the new addition would, would provide the entry into the residential monastery building as it exists today.
Do you have other exhibits that might help the board understand the proposal?
I do. I will get back to A1. This is a larger, larger scale. And you can see here the, the St. Mary's Abbey here.
For the record, that's marked A?
A3.
A3.
Fated 3.
Thank you. Forgive me for interrupting you. Go ahead.
So, so the St. Mary's Abbey and specifically the monastery building is, is very internal, internal to the existing campus.
Where's, where's the Mendham Road?
Mendham Road is, is to, is to the north.
Okay. So for orientation purposes?
Yeah, it's, it's off, it's off of the, of the map here. And I would refer to our, our site civil engineer to give some more exacting metric to the distance to property lines. Just to continue on this site plan, again, the, the 1,200 plus square foot, two-story addition provides a 661 square foot footprint. We're proposing two new handicap spaces, which would be immediately adjacent to that entry, a new small plaza, outdoor entry plaza to the entry, and then some reconfigured access that would be more accessible, if you will, for both residents or visitors that are parking in the main lot as well as the handicap spaces.
No additional parking is proposed other than the handicap spots?
That is. That is correct. That is correct. In fact, well, I'll let the civil engineer address. We are eliminating an existing drive. So there's a net reduction in roadway surface in this proposal. If I could move on to my next exhibit, fast forwarding, if you will, to the appearance of this addition.
And that has been marked A2.
Marked A2 with today's date. This is a three-dimensional rendering, looking from the southeast, and it shows the entry addition. The exterior design is to be in context with the existing aesthetic of the monastery. Materials are to match the brick as closely as possible, the existing brick structure, and provide windows within that that I could talk to in the elevations. Moving on to the next, these next four exhibits were submitted as part of the original application. A1.
But before you go, I'm sorry to interrupt, but these, so these are the architectural plans you submitted, dated November 1, 2022. Is that the last date?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, they don't need to be marked as exhibits any further. You could reference them by their?
Thank you.
By their sheet numbers.
Okay, so this sheet number is A1. It is a ground-level plan. The existing monastery building, I will point out, is a two-story structure. However, it occurs on three different levels because it is a sloped site. So it's sort of built into the hill, rising up from the entry, if you will. So this floor plan shows the first floor of the proposed two-story addition with the new entry plaza just to the plan north. These are the two handicap spaces I was referring to, a weatherlocked vestibule, a reception desk, and a waiting area with some seating. That is, provides direct access into the administrative component that currently exists within the monastery. And this is where some administration is housed with their offices, as well as meeting rooms to meet with the community at large. Next exhibit I'm referring to is Sheet A2, which was submitted. This illustrates the proposed second-floor plan, which essentially the entire second level of, again, slightly over 600 square feet, is a community room called the solarium in the plan. But again, this would be a multi-purpose room for socialization. There's a lot of daylight in here, so there's ability to grow indoor plants, et cetera, et cetera. And that accesses the existing second-floor space, which begins the residential units and some of the areas to be renovated for common laundry facilities, et cetera.
Before you move off, it's probably, everybody's probably aware of this, but let's just put your fingers around the new part and put your fingers around the old part.
Okay, the addition is here, this perimeter. And then?
Everything else is existing.
All the darker, shaded walls are existing.
That may have been obvious, but I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Yeah, essentially, we're coming out from this existing wall face, 18 feet, 8 inches out, and then on this leg, 16 feet, 8 inches out. Again, a rather small addition, but highly functional to address the current needs. And then next exhibit is A3. This sheet reflects the north elevation and the east elevation. Again, I will orient you to this line that I'm referring to. Everything to the left is existing. Everything to the right is new. This addition, that maximum height is 24 feet, 6 inches, far below the height of existing adjacent structures within the abbey. Again, the proposed exterior material is predominantly brick with large windows to allow for daylight, a protective entry canopy over the entry door. And the balanced height of the height, aside from the maximum feature light well, if you will, that you saw in the rendering, is 5 feet less than the 24, or 19 feet, 6 inches. And then the last exhibit I have here are the remaining two elevations, those being the north elevation of the addition and the west elevation. Again, orienting you, everything left of the pen is existing. And then the new addition to the right, and then down below on the west addition, similarly, everything to the left is new and everything to the right is existing.
Anything else? I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, this witness? Yes, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, I'd like you to go back to Sheet 1 in our packet. There was, it looks like a patio. I don't know if that's civil engineer, will you look that up?
You can.
Well, the engineer is going to testify next.
I'll leave that question.
Yes.
Will there be any basement space under this addition?
No, there will not.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Board professionals?
I have no questions from this witness.
Mr. Warner?
No.
Any questions from the public for this witness? No, seeing none, we'll move on, I guess.
Thank you.
Mr. Giorentano, you've been sworn.
Yes.
For the record, would you give the board the benefit of your credentials in the field of engineering?
Sure. James Giorentano, G-I-U-R-I-N-T-A-N-O. Are you picking me up on the speaker? Okay. My voice does project. I just thought the microphone next to me. Good? Okay. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering dating back to 1994. Licensed professional engineer since 2001. My license is in good standing. I have testified on several occasions before this board in the past.
I offer the gentleman is an expert in the field of professional engineering?
All accepts his qualifications. Please proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for having me. What we have here is a very modest addition to a building that's basically in the center of the Del Barton campus. As counsel has said, it's approximately 165 acres in area. For the record, it's block 4501, Lot 2.01, and is in the OSGU zone. The school and the monastery are permitted uses. Referring to A3, which was previously entered by Mr. Aluto, this is an aerial photograph of the central portion of the site. So north is generally almost in a 12 o'clock direction, which puts Mendham Road and Old Main off this sheet. Sugarloaf Road would be down towards the eastern side. What you can see right here is the Vincent House, which is this rectangular-shaped building. And then you have the abbey. And this white area is also a portion of the abbey, which is just east of that is where the proposed improvements will occur. We've reviewed the wetland plans and stream encroachments. There are no wetlands or riparian zones located in this area. All areas are previously disturbed. So moving on to Exhibit A1, which is an enlargement of the aerial photograph from A3. You could see the, in this gray tone, the proposed addition. There is about 165-square-foot entry feature in that area that is being removed to facilitate the construction of this area. Also included is a paver patio plaza area, two handicap-accessible parking stalls. And what we've also been able to do is add a loading area that if somebody needs to drop something off, they can park in this area, drop it off, and continue going. There is also an existing hydrant located between the Vincent House and the abbey, as well as an existing light fixture, which you could actually see the shadow on the road over here, and another one on this corner. This one, this light fixture over on the western side will be replaced, but it will match the fixtures on site. Also included will be this drop-off area, which we've put in so that it will be for ease of drop-off of pedestrians to enter the abbey area and access the parking. Landscaping will consist of three trees. I apologize. They are Greenspire Little Leafs, 2 to 2 and 1/2 inch caliper. By ordinance, we are required to replace one tree. We are replacing three. So in this application, we're exceeding the ordinance requirement. We have the space. There'll be a small retaining wall introduced along the Vincent House. That wall's only about 2 feet tall. It's just to catch up with the grade as we put out a 24-foot-wide drive aisle behind the parking stalls. Total disturbance for the site is under 10,000 square feet, 9,288, as we draw it in CAD, which is 0.22 acres. There is a small increase in impervious area, 2,304 square feet, 0.05 acres. In order to mitigate that increase in impervious area, we are proposing to construct a small stormwater detention basin in this area, which is basically a single pipe. We're dealing with very small volumes of water, which will then connect to the onsite conveyance system. We're maintaining the existing drainage patterns. In addition, as Mr. Olezzo was asking, there are two patios proposed along the existing building. Currently, there's doorways that come out of the building. They basically go down to a steps, down to a pad and a lawn area. What we're doing is we're providing outdoor gathering areas for the residents of the building. That's all they are. The one is actually completely shielded from everything around it. That's the patio on the north side of the building. You have the clinic to the northwest, Vincent House. And then the other patio is also tucked in in this little notch area of the existing building. Lighting will consist of the existing fixture, which I described before, which is mounted at 16 feet. We're proposing one additional feature, or one additional fixture, which is 16 feet high and will match the existing lights on site. And then one light will be mounted to the wall, will be 10 feet high. That's more of a pedestrian-scale light. We do need a waiver from steep slope disturbance. We're disturbing an additional 732 square feet for this project, the slopes that we're disturbing.
I'm sorry, I think, give me the square footage again on the disturbance.
732, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
The slopes were previously disturbed as this whole area has been developed. These slopes are being disturbed to facilitate the construction of this driveway coming in for the handicap parking, the loading, and also serves as access to the pathway behind the Vincent House.
And as a professional engineer, do you believe the relief that's being requested is justified?
Yes, yes. Construction will result in less steep slopes through the inclusion of the retaining wall. And I'm sorry, Mr. Warner, it's 723, not 22. And that specific section is 57-160E, E, lowercase E, of the ordinance. And in essence, there's very little site work associated with this project. Mr. Chairman, that's the direct testimony that I have. I'd be willing to answer any questions the board or the public may have.
Thank you, Jamie.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Wilson.
Yes. There'll be a couple steps, yes, there'll be a couple steps down. The accessibility, as Mr. Aluto had said, the accessible route is through this main entrance here to get people into the building.
Is there a ramp? I'm trying to understand that.
No, this isn't at grade. This is at-grade entrance. So from a handicap accessibility standpoint, you have the two parking stalls, as I'm referring to Exhibit A1. If you could see these two arrows, those are the ramps coming down on both sides with the landing in the middle. So you would come into this landing, you would turn left to go, because there's a curb that's holding up the plaza on the far side. So you would come around, and that's your accessible route in. These patio areas are really just for gathering and for the residents to enjoy the outdoors.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Wilson.
I'm referencing the TCC report. It talks about addressing stormwater management to dissatisfaction of our engineering department.
Right.
Drainage calculations were submitted to us. They were reviewed, and they are satisfactory. They are dealing with a very good soil up there. So instead of putting an open basin in or underground tanks, they're installing, as part of the drainage, they're installing French drains so that the water will go in, it'll soak through the pipe into the stone, and then recharge the groundwater. And one of the features in the drainage system is a orifice in one of the catch basins to hold the water back, to force more water into recharge than letting it go down the pipe. It's acceptable to us.
Thank you.
Other questions? Oh, yeah, that's fair.
Thank you. Let's go sit and address the question I had about the stormwater drainage. There's another question I have about lighting. I don't know if this is appropriate. Okay, apparently the environmental commission meeting, coming from that meeting in January, there was a comment about the lighting that's intended to put in place.
Yeah, so that was with regard to the color temperature, the 3,000 Kelvin?
The color temperature as well, it's just generally about whether or not, whatever lighting will be put in place, what's going to be, you know, mitigate the disturbing wildlife that's going to be?
These, especially the fixture on the building, it's only 10 feet off the ground. So it's really a pedestrian-scale fixture. We're not talking about high poles. And also even at 16 feet, they do not have a tremendous area that they're lighting. It's really a confined space. I'm not sure. I would have to ask Brother Paul if the, are the roadway lights on all night long? For security purposes, they are on all night long. But we're not lighting up like a parking lot, per se, as if you go to a shopping center. If you can afford me one second, and my eyes are good enough to read this small print. So in the parking lot, we have, over the entire area, here we go, the average is 1.8 foot candles, which is a relatively low intense light. The maximum is 14.3, which occurs directly under that fixture typically. And then, of course, the minimum goes to zero because you go out to where it doesn't calculate any further. So, yeah, so we are not dealing with very, very high light. You know, it's not a car dealership parking lot. It's not a shopping center parking lot. There were less than 2-foot candles on average, which is something, you know, which is appropriate for this type of use.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Evans?
Just getting back to the question about the patio. You had mentioned that there's going to be a new patio for the residents, just a gathering area. I think you had mentioned.
Just to enjoy the outdoor space. That's correct.
Right. Does that need to be ADA compliant, or are there steps there?
There are steps. It does not have to be. Just refer to our accessibility expert.
I have a couple of questions. You said there's a slight impervious area increase?
Correct.
Okay, and I, is that due to the two patio areas? Because it strikes me looking at, you're taking the existing roadway out of the front, so it looks like less, but?
Very good observation, yes.
But it's the two that's that bad?
Yes.
And the other question is on the steep slope disturbance. Is that all in that, in that area, as I recall?
Over here, there's a very small area that's actually affected with the corner of the patio on the north side. with the corner of that, of the patio on the north side of the building.
As I recall, I think I have to concur with the Environmental Commission, actually, probably an improvement, that especially the area of the parking lot now is obviously just a bank that was stuck up there when to accommodate the existing roadway that goes up through there.
Right. So now, this is more defined in, the wall will decrease the slopes, decrease the potential for erosion.
Okay, thank you. I have no more questions.
I have one other question, but I'm not sure you're the correct person on landscaping.
It's on my plans.
On page six of the plans that we got, I see you've listed some of the trees and shrubs that you're planning to plant, and I just want to confirm that those are not on our do-not-plant list, are you?
My understanding is they're not. We will double check, and if we have to revise that, we will, we will select a different species.
Okay, so you're agreeing to comply?
Yes, yes.
With the do-not-plant list? Very good. Thank you.
Anything else? Do we have any questions from the public for this witness? Seeing none, I guess. Any, any additional from the board, from the professionals?
Okay.
Just wanted to reference that, for the record, the fire officials' report of March 1 and the site inspection report of March 1 are on the record, and for the members of the public, no questions or concerns were noted with respect to either.
Wasn't there a reference somewhere about sprinklers? I can't find it in my notes. Maybe that
Was that environmental? It wasn't in? No, not, not in anything.
Okay. If there was a question, I believe, as to whether sprinklers were needed?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Sprinklers needed.
The new addition will be suppressed.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The new, the new addition will be suppressed.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Anderson? No, I have nothing. Phillips? Okay, then you have a
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
That's it.
And I have nothing further to say. I'm sure the board can
Okay, go with this. I guess, then, yes, public comments, yes. We have any comments on this application from the public, members of the public? Seeing none, I guess we can close the public session. What?
Is there anyone online? Oh, I forgot. I'm sorry.
Good suggestion.
I saw someone turn up.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the plan with the provision that they're going to double check the do-not-plant list, as Ms. Wilson had, had mentioned.
Like, second motion?
Any discussion, comment? Okay, I guess then we can take the roll.
Just a reminder, it's a minor site plan with the one steep slope design waiver that was apparently justified, if that's going to be the vote by the engineer, and I'll make sure all the conditions of approval are set forth in the resolution. And if I don't, my colleague who's behind me, way behind me, will.
Okay, thank you. So, given that, I guess we could proceed with the roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
The nun?
Yes.
Mr. Aluso?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Inwater?
Yes.
Ms. Benoit?
Yes.
Ms. Vine?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we're trucking along, done with the hearings, really, since our legislative committee wasn't here last, last meeting. Do you have anything for us this week?
We do not.
Nothing from me. Okay. And we already dealt with the, the extension of the, called the minor subdivision D.
No closed session, Mr. Chairman.
No closed session. Are there any other, you know, comment or things from the board now that would like to comment on, bring up? Well, wait, no, we have, we have a couple items, yeah. Yeah, I, I
I applaud the enthusiasm.
I would like, I'd be, I would, I'd be remiss. I would like to thank, yeah, I'd like to thank our secretary, Sonia, for, if you noticed in the agenda, there is a link
People, they're supposed to be approved for the development for Mount Campbell Avenue, 450, 460, in, well, Morris Township, I guess, and, and Morris Township and Harding Township. They said there was supposed to be a zoning, and it was approved by Harding Township, and it was going to be approved tonight.
No.
This is the planning board. There's nothing like that before this board. That may be referenced to
They said the zoning had to be changed first?
Not, not
It's Harding.
Yeah, not, not in Morris Township, if I'm thinking of what, if we're referring to the same matter. But that was a matter, I think, that long ago was addressed by the zoning board of adjustment, a different board in this township, and also was addressed by Harding, but it's not Yeah, but not, 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 I don't believe it ever was addressed by this planning board, nor is it necessarily going to be addressed by this planning board. Yeah, certainly not on tonight. I don't know that it's anything that's anticipated to be on before this, this board, the planning board.
There was a public hearing in front of DEP on March 9.
In the paper, yeah.
But it's, that project is not coming before this board.
Who should she call tomorrow to ask?
I would go on the Great Swamps website. They have information about the Great Swamp.
Great Swamp Watershed.
They have information on their website about the hearing that took place, and if you want to submit comments to DEP, they have information about how to do that on their website.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
It was interesting, anyway.
So, so I wanted to thank Sonia. If you noticed on the agenda, there's a link to our procedures now, as well, that we talked about. So that's, it's, it's on the website, and she's linked it on the agenda, so.
Oh, that's a good one.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so thank you, so thank you.
How did I miss that? Oh, my goodness. Oh, yeah.
Humility, Sonia.
No stone unturned.
That's great.
We got nothing on Sonia.
And the minutes are fantastic.
So, one other, we did have on the, I did have Sonia put back on the agenda the public comments, which we haven't had, and we just had a comment, but there was some discuss, because we, you know, that has not historically necessarily been part of the planning board meetings we have for the last couple of years. I kind of like the fact that they're on there.
Yeah.
Give the opportunity, especially if we are talking about, you know, starting to approach master plan issues, there may be some comments, you know, related to some people and questions on, on that process and what happened. I don't know with the rest of the board. And most times, we don't have anybody, that's, and that's perfectly fine, but I think it might be, it's nice to have it on there for the public to have a chance to comment if they want to on. Okay.
Me too.
Okay. So we will continue to, we'll continue to leave a place for on the agenda. Okay, and there are no closed sessions, so I think barring any other comments from the board?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.